Call the May 17th Common Council Meeting Order. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Alderman Hopefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Here.
Alderman Nelson?
Here.
We have a quorum, please rise and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to announce that the city of Franklin has dodged a bullet. This past weekend at their opening season series, the Milwaukee Milkmen defeated the Lake Country Dock Hounds in a three-game series. They won 2-1. But what was more important was the two mayors of the two communities, me and Oconomowoc Mayor Bob Mangus, Magnus, bet that the losing mayor would have to subject themselves to a visit to the dunk tank at the next home series. Fortunately, 3-2, Franklin doesn't get that vision. So we're all in good shape. I just want to let everybody know that. It was a good series, though, but anyway. Okay, with that, I'm going to open the citizens' comment period. Any citizen wishing to speak, please rise, come forward, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're going to tell us. Anybody?
Hello, it's weird on this side. Courtney Day, 8672 South 51st. I'm going to try to condense and keep it under three minutes. So I'm just going to read this, so it'll go faster. I'm here to speak to two items tonight. The first is the announcement regarding the Spirit of Public Health Award earned by Ellen Henry. She's been with the Health Department for about three years and hit the ground running from day one. She's constantly worked to improve and innovate the drug-free community grant program which she oversees. In addition, she has helped with many Health Department-related needs and programs, including stepping up in enormous capacity during the height of the pandemic, whenever and wherever the department needed assistance. Currently, her salary and benefits are 100% grant-funded through the DFC grant. My hope is that with this award, combined with all that you already know about her and her work, shows her value not only to Volition Franklin, but to the Health Department and the Franklin community as a whole. And I would strongly encourage all of you as you approach the budget season to try to look for ways to encapsulate her to become a city employee. And the second reason I'm here is in support of the resolution submitted under G7 related to the Code of Conduct and Ethics document. I know there's been some disagreement on certain points of the document. However, I feel some of those concerns have been misconstrued in comments that have been made at recent meetings, which is why I'm speaking on it tonight. With regard to Section 3, my understanding when it was drafted and approved, as well as when I signed it, when I formally worked here, it was formalizing a chain of command for city staff, which meant that department directors took formalized direction from the direct supervisor. An individual council member would not have the ability to directly order a department director to do something. However, this document does not prohibit council members from having the ability to call, email, stop by, discuss issues, ask questions. And I would think most department directors would welcome that discourse. I believe Alderman Hopefer said it best at the community of the whole meeting a few weeks ago when he explained that council is sort of like a board of directors and having direction from, you know, six to seven people at one time with contradictory opinions would be difficult for anyone to deal with. So it's a continuity of operations piece, not a punitive piece. So the last piece I would like to point out is that municipal employees are super hard to find. I know this from personal experience. And especially local governments, at best, we just steal from each other because there isn't a large new pool of candidates. And there are exceptional staff that work in this city, so I believe this document helps in the retention and is why it should remain in place as is. Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck. Hope the baby's doing good. And I really wish you weren't doing well at your new job, but I hope you are, anyway. Okay, anybody else? Anybody else? Mr. Fisher, good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. Before I get into my main remarks, I have two quick items. Yes, Kevin Fisher, 4930 West Woodland Drive, Franklin, Wisconsin, God's country, USA. Two quick items. Number one, I've seen you, Mayor Olson, numerous times in shorts. And I, for one, am very happy that the Milkmen won that series because I would not subject this city or anybody else to seeing you in a dunk tank. And number two, my alderwoman, Kristin Wilhelm, wants me to request that you get better chairs. I don't know if that's really necessary. I don't know if I believe her. But I'm mentioning it because maybe, for once in the future, she'll start listening to me. So we'll see how that goes. I'm here because, a few weeks ago, an alderman, and I will do my best, Mayor, to address you as the rules say. I'm here because a few weeks ago, an alderman personally attacked me here. And I want to respond. And I also want to speak to a larger issue as well in the time allotted to me. Some of you know me, 30-year Franklin resident, have built two homes here, have paid an inordinate amount of property taxes. My daughter is a student at Franklin Middle School. I like to read, I like to write, I like to follow politics. I like to write about politics. And some people don't like that. They don't. And so, a few weeks ago, I was surprised when you took up this ridiculous issue of a code of conduct. My goodness, what a colossal waste of time. Nine months, 10 months? And nobody in Franklin is talking about it. You can go to Kalis Playground, you can go to the Milkmen Games, you can go to the Umbrella Bar, Fish Fries, Bowling Alley's. No one is talking about it because nobody cares. But it came up a couple of weeks ago, and right out of the chute, the first item of discussion on that agenda item was me. It was me. Now, I thought, silly me, that the code of conduct was about how you should interact with one another, how you could be nicer to one another and respect one another. And how do I address you? And can I call you on the phone? And when can I call you on the phone? And can I roll my eyes if you're speaking at a meeting? Or can I smirk? Or sigh? I had no idea that it was me that I was included. I wasn't on the agenda. I don't sit in a chair up there. I'm not an elected official. I'm not on any board or commission. I thought it was all about you guys. I was a little surprised that little old me, I have no power in this town, but an alderman, who apparently I got under his skin and in his mind, decided that he was, not once, but several times, going to insult me. He called me a coward. You know what I think is cowardly? If I write something about people in power and they don't respond, they don't write back, they don't email, they don't call, they sit back for days and days and days and days and do nothing but then show up here and insult a private citizen. I got news for this alderman. In my long journalism and political career, I was yelled at, screamed at, called every name in the book for 24 straight years. Every Friday night on public TV, I sat on a panel discussion roundtable. And every Friday night, the liberals on the panel tried to pummel me. And every Friday night, I walked out of that studio unscathed. I've even had death threats that had to be investigated by law enforcement. So if this alderman, Mayor Olson, if he thinks that, oh, he got one over on me, he scared me, he intimidated me, he's got another guest coming. And if you are going to go down this road of a code of conduct, which, again, is the biggest waste of time I've seen in this city hall in the 30 years I've lived here, maybe, maybe you could find a line or two in the, I don't know how many pages is it? 74, I heard? Maybe you could find a line, maybe, I don't know. It doesn't matter. It's a lot, isn't it? Maybe you could find a line or two to say that elected officials should refrain from personally attacking private citizens because it's not a good look. You were here, Mayor Olson, the night when a former alderman rudely interrupted one of your park commissioner appointees. It got ugly. It was bad. It was during a citizen comment period when that alderman was supposed to just sit and listen. And you don't have to like what somebody says. You don't have to agree, but you have to listen. And that alderman didn't, and as a result, later had to apologize for his actions. I picked on you, Mayor Olson? You've never, ever used the bully pulpit of that center chair to personally attack me. My own alderwoman, who was not enamored with me, and I've picked on her a lot, never, never sunk to the level of this other alderman by ripping me and name-calling me in public at a public meeting. Now, the larger issue I want to talk about is that, and I'm in conclusion now, and I thank you for your patience. We need more cowards. We don't need fewer cowards. We need more cowards. Cowards that agree with me and see things my way and cowards who disagree with me. We need them to speak up. We need them to talk. We need them to write. We need them to opinionate. Because if people like me are getting under your skin, that's a good thing. You know why? Because an informed citizenry is the best citizenry. So we need more people speaking out to know what you are all doing. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to continue what I'm doing. If this was some feeble attempt to silence me or intimidate me, didn't work. Didn't work. And I have now been inspired. I'm going to pay even more attention and laser in my focus on one particular alderman. I'm going to be watching everything he does and I'm going to be listening to everything he says. No, you want to silence me, too? I understood, and I think I commended your patience.
No, the reality is, is that the three-minute limit is for public hearings. And... Oh, we have a three-minute limit, Mr. Fisher, so please wrap it up.
I'll just say again, I'm going to be paying real close attention to one particular alderman from now on. I thank you for your time and have a great rest of the night and productive meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. And by the way, now that you mention it, I do remember that. My apologies. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Davis, good evening.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Good to see you. So I want to speak to Item F, the letter of petition. I think it was a pretty, probably packed agenda last time, so it got sped through. But I think in a way that compromised parliamentary procedure because a motion was made without opening the floor to discussion. So I'm hoping tonight we can take the time to consider this letter of petition. And I'm asking that you grant me a few minutes, less than three, to talk about the petition about no mow May and to have discussion and to vote on it. So that's that. But I was also just really inspired by that last talk. And I want to say that I really respect all of our alderpeople. And we had alderpeople last time that brought up concerns that I think sounded to me. I have not studied the code of conduct, but the concerns it brought up seemed legitimate and the people that brought them up, I have a deep respect for. So I do hope, if I know it's on the agenda tonight, I don't know if there's been time for people to really discuss it, discuss it with their constituents, but I hope that it's carefully reviewed. And I did really appreciate the comments about social media and concerns about the lack of civility by some writers. So I want to reinforce that concern. And if alderpeople are limited in social media in a way that they feel doesn't serve their constituents, I would like that reviewed as well. And I'm concerned because I have been criticized for using the word "we" when a lot of people testify according to similar concerns. And so I would also say it's probably not appropriate to say, "nobody in Franklin is talking about the code of conduct," because I've heard people talk about the code of conduct. So I think it is good practice that we speak for ourselves. So thank you. Looking forward to the meeting.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? It pretty much runs the gamut of who's in the audience, except your mom. Okay. Seeing no one else rise, I will close the citizens' comment period. I will just add for the common council that John Raggots will start next Wednesday, for those of you who are interested. Item 2 is the mayoral announcements, recognition of Ellen Henry for her achievement as the Spirit of Public Health Award winner for 2022 from the Wisconsin Public Health Association. Ellen, come on up, so everybody can see who you are and give us the highlights of the award, please.
Hello. I was not even notified that I was nominated. So our new health officer, Lauren Gottlieb, who was in my role as coordinator for Volition Franklin beforehand, nominated me. And the Spirit of Public Health Award is for individuals within the state of Wisconsin that support boots-on-the-ground efforts to improve community and population-level health in their jurisdiction or community. So I'm very honored, and it was very unexpected. So happily, we'll be accepting it next week.
And we offer you sincere congratulations. You're well-deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. Congratulations. Okay, with that, we move on to the approval of the regular common council meeting minutes of May 3. Any additions or corrections? Barbara and Hope, for all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Essentially, two appointments, but for four different terms. James Lemire for economic development on an unexpired term. We can do, let's do all three at once. For an unexpired term expiring 6/30/22, James Lemire for economic development for the two-year term ending on 6/30/24. Let's do that one. Is there a motion to approve? Barbara and Wilhelm, Madam Clerk. That is for Item 1 and 2.
Alderman Hopefer? Alderwoman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no no's, no abstentions. Item 3 is appointment of James Lemire to the Community Development Authority for a four-year unexpired term ending 8/30/24.
So.
So.
Barbara and Wilhelm, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderman Hopefer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no no's, no abstentions. Alderwoman Hanneman nominates, as her appointment to the Board of Review, Dawn Chameleon for a term expiring 4/19/25. Is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Wilhelm, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Hopefer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichmann?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no no's, no abstentions. As mentioned earlier, and under IMF, we do have the letters and petitions again on no mow May. Is there a wish to discuss that or take action?
Can move to discuss it?
Is there a second? Alderman Hopefer and Alderman Nelson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderman?
I think there's some merit to the whole program. We're coming up on halfway through the month. I don't know the value of having it for this year, but I certainly would have consideration for it in the future, provided that the folks answering the phones would know if somebody calls for a complaint that they could pass on that information that there's an exemption during the month of May. I would also recommend that there be some notice on the city website as people go to the website to make complaints as well. But other than that, I don't have any issue with the program.
Actually, Alderwoman Hanneman, then Alderman Nelson.
All right, thank you. And I don't have any problem, per se, with the program of no mow May. And I'll say before I get criticized for not loving the pollinators, my daughter is a plant breeder at Cornell University, so I do get the importance of our pollinators and love them, too. My concern about this particular initiative is that I do have several properties that are in my district that are habitually have weed complaints against them. And my fear is that that just sort of gives an excuse for those people. And I guarantee you, these people are not genuinely participating in no mow May. So that's the caution. And because I do have some active complaints right now on the weed ordinances. And, you know, I have some constituents who are complaining because these overgrown yards are bringing in the rats and the snakes and other sorts of vermin, snakes. Yes, snakes, not good. So that's my only caution with that. But to Alderman Hopefer's point, I would like to see this, maybe next year, as an initiative with the Environmental Commission that also brings in greater education and maybe other ways that we can also support the pollinators by planting some native flower gardens and maybe offering that as part of trees for our... You know, there's a lot of ideas that we could do along with that. And I would be willing to vote to approve this for the rest of the month, but I would like some caveat there for not really letting my habitual weed growers off of the hook.
Alderman Nelson?
Thank you. Let's do it this way. All right. Thank you. So one of the things I share with Alderwoman Hanneman is those that have active complaints for noxious weeds should not be exempt during this month. If they actually have a complaint that's withstanding or outstanding, should be still held accountable. I do like the plan, or the communities have it. I like to have, I have no problem supporting something that's of residential in nature. I do not support having our city lands not cut by DPW or other buildings and our other businesses. That we want to still keep that portion. But if people wish, in their residential properties that do not have current weed complaints against them to not mow for May, I support it.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty small ask. I don't think there's going to be a lot of people participating in it. There's a lot of people that appreciate mowing their lawn and they take pride in their lawn. So I think it's going to be a pretty small number of them. I don't know. I guess maybe we should have had the clerk look up and see how many exact, you know, complaints we usually get that early in the year because it has to get over six inches for a complaint to even be filed, and then it takes time for them to go out. So I don't really see a lot of that happening in the month of May, at least for this year. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. It's a pretty small, you know, request for people who want to try to do a good thing. But I think I'd like to make a motion to spend the regular order of business to allow Ms. Davis, who asked to speak, the opportunity to...
I'm going to ask you to hold on to that until Alderman Barber and Hope are speaking because they were on deck.
Okay.
Alderman Barber. Are you finished?
All right, finished.
Alderman Barber. Push your button.
Okay. I have no issue with it. I'd like it to be a volunteer thing. Maybe next year, as Ed said, it could be coordinated to the fact where people, if they are going to go along with it, that they could contact somebody and be, say they do approve it and they want to support it and build some kind of momentum that way as an understanding as to how many people actually are involved. I think DPW should also be included at the early stages of this so that they have an understanding. I look at the yellow dandelions that are out there, and it's over six inches now, growing bigger every day. So I don't know. I just think it could be coordinated. I'd like to see it coordinated and let it be volunteer for those that want to participate.
I would just agree that if somebody has an outstanding complaint prior to that they're not allowed to participate, I think we would also have to set a deadline so that if it's the very first day of the next month, maybe there's not that expectation that those people cut that grass. But there'd have to be some logical period of time with which they'd have to comply.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Hanneman. On Ms. Davis?
Thank you. So I agree that next year, we could start this much earlier and go through the Environmental Commission, and it could, there could be other activities involved. We can make really nice signs. So that's good. But I would like for the people that are participating this year to avoid citation. And it seems like there could be some simple ways to do that if you really don't want the people that are chronic, you know, overgrowers to avoid citation. It could be that we sort of put out the word through social media that people could contact the city and say, hey, please extend my five-day warning till June 1. Or, I mean, I think there could be some simple ways around it just so that people that are... Because, oh, so I put out this petition. I talked to 40 people, and a lot of them mow and didn't plan to participate, but not a single person had any objection. But there were some people that were not mowing, and I've seen it on social media, too. So I would like for those people not to be cited this year. Cited? So, and I think there could be some simple ways to do that. And then next year, or have something more coordinated and extensive. Thanks, I think that's it.
Okay. So I'm the guy in the middle, right? Sometimes I get to say things that the six of you won't, so I will. I don't have a problem with people deciding that they want to help bees. I happen to like bees, and I know a beekeeper right here. But we have to be careful about jumping into a program that was not designed for rural, semi-rural communities such as ours. Bees survive just fine in the city of Franklin without the additional dandelions in residential lawns. I just point that out. What concerns me most about the comments I've heard today from the aldermen is a rather free idea that we should add more work to the staff, both DPW and the clerk's office. They don't have time in the spring. They don't have time in the spring to do this for a month. So if this is going to go to environmental, which I think is the appropriate place to put it, the task at environmental would be, do this on your own, don't involve city staff. Because they can't take, I mean, they've been taking phone calls on where do I register already. And it's just, it's not a good use of your staff time. I just point that out. Making signs and all of that, if there's a citizens group that wants to do that, I'm all for it. But got to be careful about the administration not to hang on to a program that's going to cause us all kinds of staff time. So with that... Alderman Welheim.
I think it's maybe being overthought a little bit, the fact that if a complaint comes in and it's in the month of May, which is almost over, when the letter goes out that says you have X amount of days, you can just have a sentence in there that says, if you're participating in no mow, you know, you can give them some type of, you know, way to send something back and that guarantee that they'll mow it in June. I mean, it's, we're almost done with the month of May, and they're just asking for not to have to get fined for that short period of time. And I get the whole thing, you know, this isn't just about dandelions, other people have other things. But my guess is you're overestimating the participation, because I just don't think that there's going to be that many people that really are going to participate in it. So, I mean, there may be, you know, a few people, but it's for one month. It's very early in the year. Just have your weed commissioner, there's a point in there where we don't even point the weed commissioner. Under ordinance, I think we have up until like now to appoint the weed commissioner. So you don't even have to point the weed commissioner. I think it said the second meeting in May is under the municipal code. Anyway, I don't want to sit here and die on this order or anything, but it's just, it's a very simple request, and I think we should just grant it. But I don't see it being more work. I see it could be less work. I was just saying, I don't, if we don't start the weed program until June 1, it's not actually more work, it becomes less work, because then you don't have staff needing to do anything about mowing in May. That cuts off the complaint issue in May. So, I don't know.
Your attorney.
My concern is the mention of there would be enforcement if a complaint is filed. And I understand, and that's a reasonable process, where a municipality does not go out and look for code violations of any kind unless there's a complaint, and then enforcement procedures could begin if there is a violation. However, what I'm hearing here is that there would be a timeout on the application of the code to all residential properties in the city. So it's not a violation, but if somebody files a complaint against a single property, then somehow it's a violation. And I don't know that there is a reasonable fairness to that process. At a minimum, it would take some review. In other words, it's not against the law unless somebody complains against you, and then it's a law violation.
From Eichman.
I just wanted to say, while I'm not against supporting this by any means, it is May 17th. The month is over, half over. I agree with the others as far as excusing the rest of the month for not mowing, but I do feel strongly that in preparation, if we go forward with a program like this next year, that we should also perhaps do our research and talk to some of the other surrounding communities, such as Greendale and Greenfield. There's a lot of misconceptions out there, such as, well, nobody in these particular communities are mowing. That's not true. I drove through the village of Greendale today, and there was very few yards that I found that have decided to not mow. Misconceptions as far as the DPWs in those communities, maybe we could talk with them as far as Greendale and Greenfield DPWs. To my understanding, they are each cutting, maybe not cutting to the full potential they normally would. But I just feel that environmental should do a little bit of research, because these other communities did start the program and get a jumpstart on it before us, and do our homework and learn a little bit more as well. So that's all I wanted to say, and thank you, and thank you, Debbie, for speaking.
Action with regards to this matter. Oh, yeah, let's hear from the clerk, please.
I wanted to let everybody say their piece before I caught you, before you made a motion. If you do make a motion, I would like you to please take into consideration some direction, such as, do we not accept complaints? Do we start enforcing the cutting on the first? Do we start accepting complaints on the first? I would like to mention that at the last meeting, the common council confirmed the appointment of the weed commissioner already. We start taking complaints on the 15th of May. We have published a Class 2 notice already telling people that we have an ordinance requiring them in the future, if you decide to go with this. That is something that obviously would be a code amendment and would be handled differently, knowing that ahead of time. So whoever makes the motion, if you do make a motion, I would request that you include quite a bit of clear direction in it. Wasn't that helpful?[1045.33][1045.33][laughter]
Okay. Well, I was just going to suggest we send it to the Environmental Commission to come up with next year, but the council could simply start the code June 1 for next year. And the clerk is correct, I knew we already appointed the weed commissioner, but under the municipal code, we have until the middle of May. I believe it said the second week in May to appoint someone. So, yes, we already did appoint someone. But I guess my thought is to send it to the Environmental Commission, or have them look at next year for beginning to do the ordinance, and starting in May, and come up with suggestions to come back to the council. For this month, I am certainly not going to be enforcing, not that I'm the enforcer, but I do have people call me and request me to put in the complaint, and I will say, in this instance, you need to put it in yourself if you're going to make a complaint. I'm not going to put complaints in until June 1 if someone calls me as an alderperson. That's how I'm going to handle it.
So the motion is to refer to the Environmental Commission for more research in specific direction. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Alderman Eichman.
Part of my motion was for the...
For 23.
For the Environmental Commission to look at the delay to June 1. I wanted to make sure that had gotten in there, because we wouldn't start the complaint system under the municipal code until June 1.
I don't know that you're, Alderman Nelson, when you're Environmental Commission, like me, I think you're done for the month, aren't you?
Yes.
No, I'm talking about when they take it up and it comes back for next year, that they look at delaying our ordinance. They would suggest to the common council, if it makes sense, that they would say, common council, we've looked at this, and all these municipalities, this is how they handle it, and we're suggesting since your ordinance goes, starts in the mid-May, you could delay it for two weeks and start June 1. And if the council agrees with that type of thought and research, then we could change our municipal code to June 1. We don't have to have the Environmental Commission do that.
My simple Irish mind is sitting here going, is it no mow May mean 1st of June? So I think we're okay. All right. Discussion on that particular motion. Alderman Barber.
You don't need the Environmental Commission, Mayor, to change our own ordinance. We could do that, but I'm giving, that's what you asked, so that's what I put in here.
Alderman Barber.
I agree with the motion that it should be turned over to the Environmental Commission. I'm also asking that there be some citizen input into that, as well as some citizen volunteer work to be done on some of the things, like if you want to do signs, and if you want to get people or accept calls, give a number out for that, so you're not taking up clerical staff. And then DPW is how that conflicts with their scheduling at the same time, but I'd second that if it hasn't been seconded with those caveats.
The motion was made and seconded.
Okay.
So you want to leave it alone, and you can communicate through Alderman Nelson or go to the committee meeting, right?
That I can do, but I probably will.
But understand, just so everybody knows, and I'll go on record and I'll take all kinds of abuse for it, but I got sick and tired of this, our, the lawn at City Hall and the city facilities being yellow. We finally got a handle on that. I'm not going back. So...
Can I see the other one? You're done, sir.
I'm done. Alderman Nelson.
I guess for some clarification, I was making it real clear that I didn't want our DPW to hold back from mowing anything. I didn't want our, I want nothing, and I like a well-groomed, I'm just speaking for myself. I'm a freak with my lawn, I like it nice and clean-cut, and I don't like weeds, I don't like dandelions, I don't want visitors. Anyway, I don't want our DPW taking on any more responsibilities. I don't believe that was even mentioned tonight, but I just, it's just a residential piece only, from what I understand, just for residences that wish to not cut for the month of May, that's it, to keep it in its most simplest form. I support that for the next two weeks, no cutting law if they wish, if that's where we're going to go with this. I don't want, it's no bearing on our DPW or city staff whatsoever, correct?
Okay. Or 22. So let me restate it, just so everybody's clear. As I understand it, and Alderman Welheim certainly feels free and will correct me, the motion is to refer to the Environmental Commission for additional research and a recommendation on possible participation for 2023. Okay. And to recommend possible delay of the ordinance enforcement in 2023 to June 1, even though by definition, no mow May means no problem with the ordinance. Okay, on that motion, wow, half hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. G1, an update from Ballpark Commons. I just got a text from Mike Zimmerman. I apologize for using the electronic media in the meeting, but it was for the meeting purposes. Mr. Zimmerman's tied up with a media interview and sends his regrets and asks that we put this on the agenda for next meeting. So with that, we move on to G2. Resolution authorizing certain officials to accept the First Amendment for conservation easement as part of a special exception for a property located at 12000 West Loomis Road, that'd be Boomtown Acre LLC. Mr. Eddy. Mr. Plankman.
This is a follow-up to a action that was previously approved for a natural resource special exception on the property at 12,000 West Loomis Road. One of the conditions applied to the pond there and the need to clean up the drainage from that artificial feature. The applicant has provided drawings to engineering to resolve the drainage problem, which engineering has approved, and this is translating that into the amendment to the conservation easement that was previously approved on a prior CSM, or related to a prior CSM. And so that's what we're asking for now, is to authorize us to go ahead and initiate the recording of the amended conservation easement as drafted.
Question for staff. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution 2022, whatever it's going to be, a resolution authorizes?
Mayor, you said questions for staff. I said I have my light on.
Oh, I thought you said I didn't. Alderman Welheim.
Ms. Jody. Is there a method where we can have conservation easements in perpetuity so they don't get amended? For this particular issue, I don't really have a concern with the amendment to the easement, but it's always been my understanding that conservation easement should be forever. So just some thought on that, not so much related to this issue, but I want to just toss it out there for maybe discussion with city attorney and city staff on a future item.
Mr. City Attorney.
They are in perpetuity. And they are created by the city. They're on city format. City is the recipient of the conservation easement. The city owns the easement, and the city, over changing times, may have it amended. That's why there's an amendment process, and it still runs with the land in perpetuity. And if you don't want an amendment, you vote against it. Right.
Right. And like I said, I'm not, I don't have a problem with this in particular, and I just, just to give you a little background on why I even brought the question up, and I won't dwell on it, you know, prepared to move forward with this. But in my dealing with conservation easements with donations that are given, where people take a value, and they actually take it off their tax records, an amendment would mean amendment to their tax records as well, and that might be a little bit more for us to go into here. But that was where the history of my question came from, because typically a person gives a donation, then they get to take the adjusted gross value of the property off their taxes for X amount of years, but if that size changes, that assessed value of that changes as well. So with that, I think we should just move on with this. That was just...
Anyone else on this? Your motion to adopt a resolution 2022, whatever it's going to be, a resolution authorizing certain officials to accept an amendment to conservation easement for and as part of the approval of a natural resources special exception for property located at 12000...
Second.
Wait a minute, I was thinking as to whether I had enough zeros there. West Loomis Road, subject to technical corrections by the city attorney, city engineering department, Department of City Corrections, that's part of your master motion?
Yes, sir. So moved.
It is. Well, I have the second.
Ladies first. Nelson and Welheim. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion on page 43, G3, standards and findings for the city of Franklin on the application of Stephen R. Mills for a natural resources special exception for the RISE development. Mr. Eddy.
Yeah, this is the final stop on this request. Environmental Commission recommended approval with a series of conditions. Our April meeting, Plank Commission held a public hearing on May 5, at the end of which we added one change to require that this was conditioned and contingent upon adoption of amendment to the boundaries of TID 6 and the execution of and obtaining recording of the certified survey map. Certified survey map was approved in February. The rezoning was also approved in February. Certified survey map wasn't recorded because we had corrections at the back end of South Monarch Drive for the turnaround, which was formally adopted as an actual cul-de-sac. And in the course of that process, the applicant proceeded forward with the project for this property, which is a combination of Lot 84 and the adjacent property currently owned by Mr. Singh and his car. And the end result is that the property has shown, which is Lot 84, and the adjacent property currently owned by Mr. Singh and his car. And the end result is that the property as shown, which is lot 2 of the CSM, is split between TID 6 and not TID 6. So the applicant is sort of in a standstill at the moment while we figure out, while the TID district is amended to either include or exclude all of that property in the TID. That's a council decision, but that's one that obviously impacts how this thing gets developed, because it's illegal currently, or not legal. This would be the better term for it, right? It's, it's pending, yes, and development of the property could not go forward until the boundary is resolved.
And we're not in a point at the moment to provide the financial analysis as to whether it should go in or should go out, but that doesn't prevent us from acting on this. Alderman Nelson.
I was going to ask that, Mr. Mayor, if we can still make that, if I can still make the motion to move forward as, then I will make that motion this time.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Barber. Discussion on the motion. All those in favors, Mr. City Attorney.
Motion to approve the decision that's in the council agenda packet, correct?
Correct, sir.
Which has the condition of finalization of the boundary amendment. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that draft ordinance starts on page 45. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to G, to G4 on page 121, an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone a certain parcel of land from R8, multi-family to R6, single-family on the end of Lake Point Drive. Alderman Eichmann, seconded by Alderman Wilhelm. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G5 is another item on that particular parcel. It's a standards and findings decision of the City of Franklin. Is there a motion to adopt the standards and findings decision of the City of Franklin Common Council upon the application, Carly J. Blake and Jacob Mutter, request for a special exception to some natural resources features in the City of Franklin Unified Development Ordinance?
I need a motion.
Alderman Eichmann. I like it. Seconded by Alderman Wilhelm. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G6 on page 177 is a motion to table a contract with Houche Design to the next meeting.
So moved.
It'll be Nelson and Barbara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G7 is an affirmation of the City of Franklin Code of Conduct and Ethics. Alderwoman Hanneman. Is there a second? Well, we get a second. Seconded by Alderman Barber. Alderman Nelson. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Alderman Wilhelm.
Alderman Nelson's from last time.
Alderman Nelson.
First of all, first part of this is to address the gentleman speaker that was here earlier, and I would like to see that a review of the tape from the committee, the whole, review of the tape from the following day's council meeting, because as I spoke on that item, there was never a name mentioned by anybody on this council, and I recall, nobody. So I guess when the gentleman speaker came and I tried to get his attention as he left, I was hoping he was going to stay for this item, to clarify, using the term keyboard coward, perhaps basement blogger, all fitting, but there was never a name mentioned with anybody, ever. So the fact that this gentleman came here, assuming it was him, is, is interesting, but there was never anything mentioned on that. So I wanted to have that cleared for the record. Never was, and I would never, ever, I didn't hear anybody here insult any member of the community regarding this issue, ever, with that. Number two point to this item is I asked it to be moved this past week to June 21st because there was a few items that I wanted to have clarified to add to this, and I was hoping to do that, and I had spoken with Madam Clerk and Madam Director of Administration and to have this cleared for June 21st, in which time would afford me enough time to put some, a few points together, a simple clarification of a very small piece of this document. As a whole, I like the document, and when I asked for it to be held over, it was unanimous, and then it appeared back tonight. And I guess my confusion is why is it back here when I'm asking for it to be held open until June 21st? And is that a possibility, or does whatever vote take place tonight prevent that from happening? I yield.
Well, your motion was adopted by the common council, so this would not impact your motion, because your motion was an action of the common council. And reading this and reading your motion, no muss, no fuss, as far as I'm concerned, not my motion. So given that. Get my hands off the controls.
I guess I'm up. Yeah, I guess I have concerns when we have, when we make motions and then we do something different, and I thought Alderman Nelson's motion was reasonable. He had some things he wanted to bring forward, and I was not here when this was adapted the first time. I have, I think on itself, this document attempts to do what the council tried to do. I think that the problems, what I see with it, are the areas that it curbs the aldermen's ability to assist their constituents in a way that can actually cut staff time. And I have plenty of examples of that. I'm sure you don't want me to go into them, but I'm telling you a couple things that this actually created has caused more staff time. In particular, I've had concern, I have concerns with Section 5, where an elected official and their conduct with other public agencies and offices, that such members should curb their individual communication with other agencies. Any such interaction would simply be as a citizen and not as a council member. That is interesting because I see public officials, elected officials, state representatives doing interviews on television, I see them put out newsletters, I see them put out emails, and I never see them say before they speak, this is my own personal opinion. This newsletter is just mine. I think it's pretty much a given that if they're speaking their opinion and they're sending out an email about how they feel about a certain topic, that it is not being blessed by the entire state or, you know, the other council member or whatever. And so to say that a alderman can only interact as a citizen, it's like, oh, I guess I don't need to represent my constituents, because my constituents can call, just as a citizen, just like I can, and it, it has no weight, really. If I call up and I'm asking for something, like, can I call the DOT and ask them a question about a sidewalk issue, or something like on College Avenue? Had this been in place, there would be no College Avenue right now. Had this been in place, I wouldn't have been able to meet with Mr. Morrow when we had a developer who wanted a cutaway opening on College Avenue. Had this been in place, there are a lot of things that wouldn't get done if an alderman can't assist their constituents. So I would like to see us clarify exactly when do I lose, or all of us up here, when do we lose our alderman hat? Because if I'm only communicating as a citizen to an agency, do I now not, no longer have to make that email or whatever public? Because if I'm only emailing a citizen, then I'm going to do it from my personal account. And then I'm thinking, if I'm only a citizen, I'm not an alderman. And I don't know at what point we, or any elected official, becomes an alderman and not an alderman, or a mayor and not a mayor, or a state rep and not a state rep. You're either in that position and you're elected to be there, and it affords you certain things that your legislative body allows you to do. Now, I'm not talking about you call them up and demand and say, you got to do this and you do that, but calling up and asking simple questions about basic things that if my constituent, like one time they called and they asked me, they wanted to have something about stormwater basins for homeowner association, I said, I know who to call, I'll get it for you right away. Made the call, done. But here's the process we'd go through now. I'd have to either go through Glenn, and if Glenn didn't respond to that, then I'd have to go through the mayor, and the mayor doesn't respond to it, then I'd have to go through Peggy, and if you have a mayor who doesn't respond to all your constituents or all your, all your aldermen, which sometimes happens, it became, comes this, instead of picking up the phone, getting the answer, and getting it right away, it becomes very cumbersome, and it involves way too many staff people. It's, it's not how government is. This isn't, this isn't a business. This is written for more guidelines for a business and not government. And I really would like to address, and I had asked this before, before the council adopted, when are we not aldermen? When, when are we just citizens and how do we handle open records requests when you're just a citizen at that point? And there may be other things that, you know, Alderman Nelson would like to be out, but I, I, my biggest thing is, if we're going to say something, make a motion, council, we should follow through on that motion. And he didn't have an unreasonable request, so I would, I would like to allow him to have that time to do that.
Actually, the courtesy would be to allow the person who put the item on the agenda to speak. Alderman Hanneman.
I'll yield at this point. Alderman Barber.
I second the motion. I have never felt that I've given up any rights, or this does not take away any of my rights as an alderman. I've stated that before. I also understand that this is allowing us to bring up items to be voted on by the entire council. If you feel strongly about a particular item, it doesn't have to be lobbied, it can be brought up through a process, and that's as in the now therefore be it resolved, clearly states what that is. Bring it forward, have it voted on, and we'll, we'll move on from there. But I've also am concerned that Alderman Nelson had it on the agenda, we voted to table it, I asked him why it wasn't here today, and he said because he wanted it to be fleshed out a lot better and to be, so I, I don't see where this conflicts with bringing that forward on a future date. So because of the fact that it does allow for it to be appropriately enhanced based on circumstances, so I think John should have that opportunity, and I don't think this excludes it, and I think we can vote on this just as it stands right now.
I'll restate it again. John's action was an action of the common council. Nothing changes that until the council says, no, we're not going to do that. Council hasn't done that. So on whatever date that was, it's coming back. Alderman Eichmann and then Alderman Hofer.
Thank you. I believe you just answered the clarity, the point of clarity that I was looking for as far as Alderman Nelson's items that he wanted to be amended, that that was something that we were still going to be looking into, but I believe I did get my answer on that now. I do believe that it's important for us to take a look at that since we did agree to it. It was a point of interest for me personally, as I have not signed the document as of yet. So thank you.
Alderman Hofer.
Question for the city attorney. So looking at the end result, what, what is the process? Is there any disciplinary action or any, any, any kind of action at all for somebody that doesn't follow through on any, any of these things? Because I haven't seen that anywhere.
There's a process in the Code of Conduct which speaks in terms of a complaint being filed, reviewed by the city clerk for compliance with the code, and when the complaint is complete, goes to the mayor absent any conflict with the mayor on the subject or mayor's designee. And then there are provisions in there for it to be referred to a third-party outside counsel, et cetera, for investigation. With regard to what's occurring here this evening, with everything going on, I did not recall that this subject matter was coming back to the council relatively soon. I had this vague recollection of, well, maybe September or something. And then this subject matter shows up on the agenda on Friday, and, okay, that was an Alderman Nelson motion. This is Alderwoman Hanneman. So anyway, the short version is, on a quick check, I figured, all right, it's the code, it's the subject matter, so everything can be discussed on it again. And then when the packet went out late Friday afternoon, checked the minutes, the actual motion adopted at the last meeting was that it be tabled to this meeting. So then I did my own double check, okay, the parameter of the subject matter on this agenda, is it appropriate for everybody to talk about everything? And to me, the answer from me was yes. However, at the meeting, for the first time, I hear that the reason for the unanimously adopted motion being made at the last meeting isn't ready to go yet. So since moving it to the meeting on June 21st, and that motion of the council back on May 3rd should be complied with, technically, it's, okay, it's on the agenda, it's a subject matter of the code, but at a minimum, I think there should, all things considered, realm of reasonableness, can adopt this resolution, but there should be a motion to continue that table until the June 21st meeting. That's my thoughts on it.
Alderman Wilhelm, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Hanneman, then Alderman, Alderwoman Wilhelm. Hold on one second, we're all, and then the clerk. Let's do. Alderman Hanneman.
All right, thanks. My intent in bringing this forward was not to preclude any future amendments that might come at the behest of Alderman Nelson. I brought this forward more as an emphasis, and specifically for the record on why this Code of Conduct and Ethics was enacted, and in response to a constituent who was having a hard time understanding why not all council members have to sign this. And I didn't have a good answer at the time. And I didn't have a good answer at the time. And I do have a problem with that. Now, maybe I could have just gone straight and filed a complaint, but I chose this as maybe an opportunity to further discuss among us, and, you know, some points that I wanted to make, very specifically, and I feel very strongly that this code is not to prohibit anyone from doing their job. However, it is to lower the risk, level of risk to the city, should any one of us choose to operate beyond the ambit of our positions. And it's been well documented that that has happened in the past. That's what brought this document into existence last year. Our insurance company and its independent attorney told us it's time for a culture shift. And I agree with that. And I want to emphasize to the community, and most importantly to our employees, that we take this code very seriously, and we strive for a more professional culture for ourselves and the entire city. We are the policymakers, and it should always be our policy to be able to do things better. And I agree with Alderman Holtfer, that I view the council very much as a board of directors, you know, where they oversee and guide the direction of the company, look out for the interests of shareholders, but never would a member of a corporate board of directors go into individual workplaces in that company and try to direct them, or make accusations, or, and I'm not going to lay out some of, some of the actions that have happened. But those are the things that I think that this document puts an end to. You know, I think that the initial adoption of the code should have been sufficient. The hope is that the process that we went through of crafting the code would have been a healing exercise and collaboration for us. But I feel very strongly that when some of us choose to not endorse the document, it serves to further fracture the council by sending a message that, for whatever reason, they're exempt. And I don't understand that. And that was my reason for bringing this forward.
Madam Clerk.
I just want to clarify that this is the first time in, I can't tell you how many years, that we did not, we being me, did not put a council action sheet, refer, taking that item that was referred to this meeting, and putting a note that, at the request of Alderman Nelson, this is requesting to be tabled till the 21st of June. And I didn't because the subject matter was going to be on the agenda, and I regret, now that I can see the confusion it causes, so all those departments that, I always tell, no, we still have to have an action sheet, even if it's going to be tabled, now can see why. So in the future, this will be prevented because we will continue to put those in there. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that. One of the complications I have with basically forcing the vote on this is, no one has answered my question on when I become not an alderperson, or when all of us become not an alderperson. So like I said, I didn't vote on this. I did sign the document, even though there are parts in this that I don't agree with. We are not a company, and I keep hearing about CEOs and bosses, and we are elected people, and we need to probably pull out the charter ordinance that shows citizens direct line to the alderman. That's our job. And they're the ones that are supposed to be directing us, and what they would like to see us do. I, I think that this gets very complicated when you tell an elected official they have to act only as a citizen, but then if they act as a citizen, and then there's an open records request, that just boggles my mind. And so I am asking you to please do not force this issue until we can get at least something resolved on that. Alderman Nelson has asked politely for a little more time for his concerns, and forcing to vote on this with an unanswered question that I don't think I've heard anyone address yet, I think that it's not that important. We have the document, it's maybe, you know, if there's, if you don't like that it wasn't signed, maybe Alderman Nelson can give you the reasons. And I think we owe it to him, and we owe it to our constituents to find the answer to this question. So I'm asking you, please, allow just a little time, and I'm not, I believe the document has very good standards and good input, which is helping pull us together. But there are just a couple things that I cannot, and I don't want to be the one to vote no, just because I can't get an answer to a question, I would just like to flush that out. And it puts me on the spot to say, oh, well, she didn't vote against it because that, because she had a very valid reason that she didn't want to vote on it because no one has the answer to the question. So I would just ask that not to push the issue and wait for Alderman Nelson's motion to come forward. Thank you.
Madam Director of Administration, I would put you on the spot. Could you please answer the other woman's question, as it's been answered before?
I don't know if anybody has their council manual, but in that council manual, there is some information from the league, and that explains when a council member is a council member, and how they should act as a body, and different things like that. Again, it's not to prevent anybody from doing their jobs, as I have heard, but I would need some documentation in order to make sure I read it exactly, so. But it's not to prevent any of those actions. I don't know, because we keep going over the same thing again about calling the department heads. To my knowledge, that was the process before, was calling the department heads, and it hasn't changed. So I'm just kind of confused by that one continuing to come up.
Peggy, could I give clarification on that? It's not a department head. It's public, it says, public agencies that include-
Oh, I was referring to the department head, one that, the example that I just heard about-
Oh, no, that is not-
Engineer, and then the mayor, and all that.
That is not the concern. It's the public agencies, which would include anyone in the school board, anyone on the school board, and the DOT, anyone in, you know, we had a letter from the DOT the other day, and, you know, do I want to call an RSVP? No, I can't, I can't do it. So I'm just, I'm just concerned about that caveat, that the aldermen have to become citizens when it comes to public agencies.
So the, you know, everybody worked on that language once it was presented, but really the main point of it is, is to not act on behalf of the body when the body hasn't given you permission to act. So that's, that's the essence of that clause.
We then become citizens when we're calling, and so we're no longer have to do public open records.
See, that's what I don't understand. I think there's some implication that citizens are of a lesser quality than an alderman. I, I'm just going to beg to differ, because if I call somebody as a citizen, I would expect the same kind of answers. Now, if you want to use your clout, if you will, to get somebody to answer you, okay, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. Like I said, I think the clause in the code is simply to have one person not acting as a body. So when you go, let somebody brought up a media example, a general policy best practice according to the league and a lot of other documents is, is speak on behalf of the body only when you're given permission to speak on behalf of the body. But can you speak to anybody anyway, not as part of the council? That's freedom of speech, absolutely. But I just, I don't, I don't understand the question, because I think I'm getting the impression that citizens are of a lower class, and I don't see that at all.
It's not about the lower class.
Or they're going to not get an answer or something. I don't know how that works.
No, I think the question, Miss Dino, is that I would simply, and I'm not just saying I, we would simply become citizens. So we would lose our aldermatic status for the point of time while we make this contact.
So what, what do you lose?
I-
What does that status give you?
This, for me?
For anybody, any council member?
Well, this is how I view it. If I'm a citizen and not acting on behalf of the city, I'm not subject to open records.
I think you're mixing a lot of different things together. If you do something, if-
Is there a second on the call of the question?
I just-
The question's been called. Is there a second on the call of the question? Seeing no second, the call dies due to lack of second. Alderwoman Hanneman has withdrawn her motion. It was seconded by Alderman Barber. Alderman Barber, you consent on this withdrawal? Alderman Barber has consented on withdrawal. Is there an objection to the withdrawal?
I just-
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Seeing that the motion has been withdrawn by the first and second, and received no objection by the common council, the motion is withdrawn. Alderman Hanneman.
I will this item until June 21st.
Does this motion also reinstate Alderman Nelson's request for his agenda item to be also continued to be tabled until the 21st? We do one motion.
Okay.
Alderman, who made a second? It's been moved and seconded to add the continuation of the table for Alderman Nelson's motion from the last meeting. Okay, Alderman Nelson on discussion.
Says it turned again. There we go. All right. One of the things that I've heard Alderwoman Hanneman state about this signing of this document, and when this document came out, I'd like just to do a little, a very brief timeline. So when this, this document, Code of Conduct, came out and it passed, it's now in effect. It's in effect regardless if we sign an additional document. It has no bearing whatsoever, because, being in the line of work I'm in, we don't like to sign things, so I called the city attorney. And I asked Mr. City Attorney, what happens if I don't sign it? What happens if I say, you know what, I'm not going to sign it, I'm going to shred it? You know what happens? Nothing. It's still in effect. We're still held accountable, it's still in effect, it has no bearing if you choose to not sign it, or if you choose to sign it. Has no bearing whatsoever on accountability with this Code of Conduct. I voted for it, I'm about 95% good with it, few things that we can tweak, and I'm ready to move forward, and I don't care, I just like the gentleman speaker. I'm done. I mean, we're good with it. But I'm glad, Alderwoman Hanneman, that you're okay with the 21st of June. It's not going to be a big surprise, things will be sent to Madam Director of Administration as I requested, and I yield.
Mr. City Attorney.
I recall the phone call from Alderman Nelson, and with regard to that subject matter as to the applicability, regardless of whether or not a board commission committee or council member signed, my recollection from the process, back when it was adopted, was hearing that it was not required to sign. And this evening, at this meeting, I hear, well, maybe that would be the subject of a complaint because somebody didn't sign. So here is another item with two different sides of butts on it, so that, so that should, well, that's what was said this evening, so that should be reviewed too. Does a, you know, does, the analogy is, every municipal ordinance in the municipal code is adopted, does it have to be signed by everybody in order to? So anyway, I'll make a note to look at that.
The illustration there is a great example. Ordinances don't need to be signed by each alderman, but it's the action of the body that puts it into effect. The body acted on this and put it into effect. One body, not individuals. And that's the whole purpose of this thing, is aldermen are one body, not individuals. So anyway, okay, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G8, direct mayor and staff to work with Monarchie County, Alderwoman Hanneman. Hanneman and Barber, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G9 is a request for approval for the Department of DTAP to do our weights and measures. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to H, licenses, Alderwoman Hanneman.
First, I will cover the recommendations-
Alderman Nelson was the seat at 7:56.
First, we will cover the recommendations of the license committee from the meeting of May 10th, 2022. Rock Sports Complex, The Hill Has Eyes, is approved pending their inspections and proof of insurance. Red's Novelty Limited, at that time, was a hold. They appeared. Today, I will cover that later. Fisher, Monty, Palace are approved. Heidi Fisher, hold for appearance. Megan Grenz approve. Page two, Grenz is also approve. Talaska, new and renew, were hold for appearance. All the remaining on that page are approvals. Page three, all approvals. Page four, all approvals. Page five, all approvals. Down to Wisconsin P&amp;P Amusement, it is approved. L's Auto Savage, approved pending inspections. Ingenious Inc., approve pending inspections. Jubilee Faith Center, approve pending inspection. TNT LLC is approve. Innovative Health and Fitness, approve pending inspections. Badger, MHP, approve pending inspection. Civic Celebration Fourth of July festivities is approval.
I have a question before the second. Wisconsin P&amp;P Amusement, you've got it on the agenda here, is a pending payment of fees.
I've got a note from the city clerk's office-
Okay.
-that those fees have been paid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Eichmann. All those in favor of the motion for the, whatever date that was, the May 10th?
10th.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Hanneman.
All right, now the agenda from May 17th.
And Alderman Nelson's returned at 7:59.
Red's Novelty LTD, approve with letter. Heidi A. Fisher, approve with letter. James Talaska, new and renewal is approve. The remaining of this page is approval. On page two, Connie Young is approve. Arian Gonzalez, new and renewal is hold for appearance. Rajendra Patel, new and renewal, approve. And Megan Pfeifer is hold for appearance, new and renewal. Amber Radmer, new and renewal, is approve. Amber Radmer, new and renewal, is approve. The remaining agenda is held until Friday, May 20th.
So that's Bartles on-
I'm sorry. At 4:30 PM.
That's Bartles on down, right?
Yes, Bartles on down.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second again by Alderman Eichman. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and move to item I, motion approving the following city vouchers on ending date of May 12th, 2022, in the amount of $2,550,939.89. And payroll dated May 6th, 2022, in the amount of $457,745.91. And payments to various payroll deductions in the amount of $258,104. Plus city matching payments and estimated payroll for May 20th, estimated $430,000. Payments to various payroll deductions, estimated $445,000, plus city matching payments and property tax disbursements with an ending date of May 12th, 2022, in the amount of $5,140, excuse me, $5,114.91. And approval to release library vouchers not to exceed $15,000. So move. Barber. Barber and Holtfer. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Holtfer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, no nos, no absences, no abstentions. With that, we end our broadcast portion of this evening's day. You'll now see these star-spangled banners and test pattern after this. So we're done with our streaming. We're going to-
Three?
Yes. So, wait, 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 wait. So we'll end our stream in a moment. Is there a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 1985 Sub 1 Sub E to consider potential acquisition of properties intended to be used for public park purposes in the general southwest area of the city and to re-enter open session at some place thereafter to act on such matters discussed as it deems appropriate? Go move.
Second.
Barber and Holtfer. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman.
Aye.
Alderman Holtfer.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, no nos, no absences, no abstentions. It is 8:03. We will return to closed session at 10 minutes after.
Recording-
It is 9:33, 8:33, excuse me.
Recording in progress.
We have returned to open session. I note for the record that the city attorney did not object to my time reference here, which is pretty unique over the last eight years. I think that's never happened. Okay, so we're back in open session. No action is taken by the council on the previous agenda item. I will correct the announcement that I made on item four. Item four, the term of Don Chameleon runs with Alderwoman Hanneman's term, that making it a one-year term expiring 2023, 4/19 of 2023. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Barber and Eichman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.